Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education regular meeting of July 10th. We're gonna, okay.
Yeah, can I go up there real quick?
Turn it over to Justin Kling, our treasurer, for a second.
Good evening, everybody. At our last board meeting, we had a few individuals, citizens, reach out to us saying that, you know, they'd like to see some of the attachments that the board is voting on. In the lack of transparency, we wanted to do something to reach out. So what we have here, again, I'm just gonna give you a quick presentation on where to go to get these attachments. If you go to Vermillion Local Schools page and go to Board of Education. Under the agendas and minutes. We've created these two screens up top. The very first one is a PDF version of the agenda, so the attachments that are back there, are in the agenda back there. And the second link is tonight's agenda. The second link takes you to board docs. We've been using board docs since 2018, 2019. If you can go ahead and click, this basically breaks down our agenda into how we're voting on things, and then it also includes our attachments. So for example, under 5.01, the superintendent, there's the attachments. That'll be for tonight's agenda. You can go back all the way to 2019. Everything the board has voted on is also included in here as well. So any type of documentation, anything that you'd like to take a look at that the board has voted on is right here, board docs for you. Okay? All the financials that we'll be going over tonight, everything's in there. Just wanna get that on the way real quick, everybody's good. Follow along on your phones if you want to.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
All right, call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mrs. Stillman.
Here.
Mr. Massey.
Here.
Mrs. Oliver.
Here.
All members present.
Item three is public participation on agenda items. So each participant's allowed three minutes to speak, and the total time allotted is 30 minutes. Please register your name, address, topic, and group affiliation. Are there any, did anyone register to talk about agenda items? Okay, I'm sorry. Is it something, we have another public participation toward the, toward the back end?
Well, my particular question was forbidding the students from having a $1 religious rate during the week.
If we could, we'll address that in the second public participation.
Do you get it?
Yes, sir. All right, item four, presentation. Wes Weaver, our assistant superintendent.
We are going to, if you don't mind, start with the presentation by Reed.
Okay.
First.
So Reed Wakefield, our school levy committee chair.
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Okay, good evening. First of all, I want to thank Board of Education for putting the replacement of renewal levy for the safety and security of our students on the ballot. And as the public may not know, as some of the board members may not know, it's the citizens of the committee who are responsible for promoting the renewal of these raising funds, and we need advertising and promotion for that. The schools can't do that, which is a interesting aspect of this. But starting in August, the committee will form on treasurer, which raises monies to promote the levy, the monies that we have due literature and advertising. This is last year's, or 2018, the safety and security levy. And it's got nice pictures and things like that. So getting pictures of students, school resource officers, and perhaps mental health counselors that this levy is funded will be important to promote that levy. So we're looking forward to working with the school board and the administrators to promote the levy, or to get the levy going, and probably in passing, to do good things to keep our children safe and secure. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, thank you, Reed.
Thank you, Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes, if you're ready, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. As that handout here in front of you shows, I'd be interested in talking to you this evening about a couple of things, both of which are topics that we talked about earlier in the year when I've been here to talk about. One of those is our math results, which are our language arts and math tests that our students take in kindergarten through seventh grade. And the other one is some of the work that we've done on curriculum this year, the culminating feature of which is the hundreds of pages of course of study that I'm absolutely certain all of you read between last meeting, that, yes, I'm sorry about the page count. I knew it was gonna be a lot, but that's a lot. So those are the two things. We see the NWA map assessments as kind of the gold standard in terms of student achievement assessments that we use. And we give them in math, and we give them in English Language Arts, and reading is the native test that we actually give. And three times a year, kindergarten through seventh grade, as those of you know who have students here in the district. So we presented previously what are on the blue bars, and this is the top left of the four graphs that you have, which is beginning with math, the percentage of students that were at or above grade level at certain points in the year. The blue bar is the September test, that's the fall test, as they call it, and the red bar is the spring test, which our kids took in, most of our kids took those in late April or in May. So that is a percentage of students, the numbers that are in the bars are the percentage of students that were at or above grade level, measured across the sample of 12 million students that take math tests across the United States. And there's a, there's a median score called red score for each, for each grade level, and this is the percentage that, of our students that were, that were at or above it. There's a good number of those red bars that are considerably higher than they were in the fall, most notably, there's kindergarten, first grade, and third grade. We have said, and this comes from something that, you know, Dave implemented in our previous district, when we started using math tests, that are always, we want 100% of kids to be reading on grade level, of course. But there are always going to be a few kids that it's just kind of tough to get theirs, maybe there's something that's significant that prevents them from reading on grade level. And one of the books that we read is called the 90% reading goal. So the, getting that number of students, that percentage of students, reading on grade level is our aim. This is the first one-year cycle data that we've looked at. This is the first, us just being new here, this is the first time that we've focused teachers and administrators on this data in the way that, in the way that we have this year. And so what we don't have yet is a trend, right? We don't have much of a trend, but we do know that this is, this is what we had in math when we took the spring test. So some, some good and some bad, the four through seven, seven numbers there are kind of at or below 60%, which is kind of a concern all the way through that, that grade band. That's, that's math. The second, the second chart, and this is the other one, it's labeled math on your, on your handout, is the percent of students who met their math growth goal in the year. So in other words, they take a test in the fall, and the software has an algorithm that generates a year's worth of growth within math, and it represents this score, and in the spring, they should be at this score. So this, these numbers are the percentage of students that met their growth target. This is irrespective of their achievement level. So you have a student who's really low, they can meet their growth target for a year's worth of growth, even if they're still significantly below. So this one is all about growth, not about proficiency or achievement. And you can see there, see there the numbers, and this is, this is in math. So the percent meeting their, their growth goal. The people at NWA who kind of create in the twenties, and the psychometricians that study these, and the statisticians that look at the scores, will tell you that a teacher that gets 70% of their students to meet their growth goal, and over the course of a school year, is pretty good. That's, that's a pretty good teacher. So kind of nationwide, looking at it, how, you know, how students perform and how they grow over the course of the year, 70% is, is what they would call a pretty good, a pretty good level. So there's math numbers. There's been much more of a focus, of course, we've talked almost exclusively about reading. So I think that it is fair to say that this is, this was more of a focus for us. A lot of the district's professional development, curricular implementation, a lot of our training this year was focused on, focused on reading. You remember that we've had three reading specialists using ESAR funds for this year and for, for next year, to focus on through to a reading below grade level. And I think specifically, the height of the four red bars there in K through three is a reflection of a lot of intense focus on, on teaching reading, which has, is continuing, and then remediation for students who are behind. So those numbers kind of in the first four grades there went, went up significantly. Three of the, three of the four in the four through seven grade band were the same, or a little bit, a little bit lower. So their cohort group, that group of students, 12 million students in the United States, kind of, they went from here to here, and some of our students, as you can see, were not at the grade level for the spring test. So you're supposed to have one score in the fall, one score in the spring, and that represents being at grade level. So that's, that's that. Very interested in the fourth of those, which is the percent of our students meeting their reading growth by grade level. So fall to spring, again, a measurement of how much they were supposed to have grown. 71% of students in kindergarten, and then 74, 62, and 77, in grades, per second, third grade there, met their growth target for, for reading between the fall and the spring tests. The 70% number that I mentioned before wasn't just relative to math, they, they kind of say that about teachers and getting these kind of results in, in reading as well. So that's, that's kind of what, what those look like. Dr. Howe, what if anything that you mentioned about that?
Just, you know, the difference between achievement and growth.
Yep.
You know, achievement is you hitting a certain target or a certain goal by a certain date. Growth is, you may not even be able to hit your achievement goal, but you can show significant growth. So that, that's really what NWA is focused on, is the growth. So if you have a student that's three years behind, and they grow a full year, they're still three years behind, right? And they may never hit an achievement goal. And you may have another student who's two or three years behind, and they all, and they hit their achievement goal, but they don't grow as much as you would like them to grow. So there's a difference between achievement and growth, and really, we're more focused on growth than we are achievement. The state of Ohio's assessments are all achievement assessments. They're all about, what, where are you on this certain date at this certain time? And they really don't measure growth for individual students.
And that is, we're challenging ourselves to get better with every kid, because it's not just the student at the low end that really struggles and is behind a grade level or two that needs to get a year's worth of growth. You know, students who are at the high end need to be challenged to get that year's worth of growth, you know, as well. When you just look at the state's proficiency numbers, you're seeing a bare minimum level of proficiency, and that's just one, one measurement. So that's why growth is what's important to us. Any questions about that part of it?
Just one, thank you for all this, by the way. Have you looked at all that, like, so I see, like, we're comparing the fall to the spring.
Yep.
Have you looked at a particular grade, like, say, for instance, the, the sixth graders or whatever, and looked at their performance from third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and see how they've performed over time? Are we making progress with, like, even some of the lower performing grades, are we at least making progress a little bit?
Yes. It's been a little difficult, because the, the implementation of the map assessments and giving them with fidelity to 100% of the kids, I'm not completely sure that that happened in previous years, like, all the time. It did at times, but then there was the COVID, post-COVID, so looking longitudinally right now is difficult. Dave and I are used to looking at it over a long period of time, and so it's kind of a challenge. I've kind of been staring at these a lot, thinking, boy, it's great when you see trends. So.
We're beginning that now, though, with this data set. Going forward, we will be keeping track of the longitudinal.
Yeah, it'd be good to know, like, over time, how are they, you know, are we making progress with a particular group of kids? And then my second question would be, is there any variance between fall and spring in the number of students by grade that took the test? Like, I mean, is there any big variance, or is it pretty much the same amount of kids each time?
With, almost without exception, the, the number of, when you look at a teacher's report, if there's 21 kids in the fall, there's 21 in the spring. There's a little mobility here with students, but, but not a lot. Every, the last couple of weeks of the testing window, the principals at the elementary and middle school, they've got those kids circled, you know, maybe there's an absence in there, for a little absence. But would, is priority number one, when they get, you know, back to school after this in a few days, or in that time period? Of course, there's field trips, there's, there's things like that, but, you know, we've tested a, maybe 5% of the kids.
So very similar sample size than in both?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. In fact, in the growth numbers, any student who, for whatever reason, didn't have one or the other, is not even computed as part of the sample.
Gotcha.
They're very, very similar. The second topic, and again, one we talked about earlier, was our efforts in curriculum mapping and curriculum alignment this year, just kind of as a, as a timeline. Back in August, Dave and I read a book called Mapping: The Big Picture by Heidi Hage Jacobson. It's a book about curriculum mapping, and kind of had discussions with our principals about that. There was kind of a general acknowledgement among them, among our teachers at the very beginning of the process, and even, I believe, going back to some of Dave's interviews with, with people, as he did his entry plan, that, like, this sort of work had not been done recently, and, you know, it's kind of tough for our teachers to remember the last time they did it. Some of the ones I talked to said, I remember, you know, going through this process, you know, a few years ago, but it's, it's, it's been a while. Mapping is literally sitting down as a teacher, and all kind of, the next little graphic there shows a calendar with different units, color-coded in different colors, and how long they last, and where they are in the year. Mapping literally means taking everything that you teach in every subject, in every class that you teach, and mapping, putting it on a calendar, mapping it out over the course of the year, so that, you know, you can see how long everything takes. And also, you're identifying all the important pieces of it, like, what are the, what are the standards that are attached to each unit of study? What, what's the content that I'm hoping to get to within each, within each unit? What kind of skills am I pulling in and reinforcing and teaching for the first time in, in every unit? So teachers kind of laying all of that out was, was this task, and that's, that's kind of why it took all year. So in August through November, teachers used our curriculum mapping software that we, we kind of picked up, I think, and it was after the year started that we discovered that it existed. And we started using it after that. So they kind of mapped out their curriculum roadmap, typed in, put in, a lot of data, but assessments, everything that they used for teaching and learning for all their classes for the whole year. Then in January through February, we met as, at the building level, we met at the grade level, like, the English department, the high school met, so that we could talk about the alignment, the alignment part of it. Horizontal alignment is, you know, kind of what it takes to ensure that every kid who's in fourth grade language arts hits the same things in fourth grade language arts, because we got three different fourth grade teachers, two fifth grade. Of course, at the elementary, there's five or six teachers in every grade. And I will, I will say this for the staff here, and for the administrators here who have done the work previously, there was a high degree of alignment. I thought there was a high degree of horizontal alignment, you know, across the board. There was very, there was a few areas where it was kind of, it became obvious that there were things that were different in the way they were addressed from one through the fourth grade, or fifth grade, or third grade to another. But the teachers kind of immediately took it on themselves in those conversations to say, you know what, let's, we're gonna get together on this, so that we're, you know, we get the same assessments in use, so that we got the same, you know, oh, you take, spend five weeks on that, you know, I'm kind of hitting that in two weeks, and then we're moving on. So there, there was a lot of conversation. The alignment started right from the very beginning, when they started to look at each other's maps and see that. So we had that conversation. The March 17th Professional Development Day was devoted, that's just kind of a screenshot of a, the ELA group there, K-12 ELA group, the event for vertical alignment. Vertical alignment is that process where we took a look at what's being taught, how it's being assessed, the skills, the knowledge, and we made sure that there were no gaps, and we made sure that there wasn't a lot of overlap. Like, we're teaching something in sixth grade math, you know, we, those two teachers, seventh grade math, they gotta get together and make sure that there's a seamless continuing throughout the whole curriculum. That's what the vertical alignment was about. Kind of come back to that in a second. When we got to the end, the teachers had kind of made sure that they had also covered all the content standards, that was another big piece of this, like, are we hitting all the Ohio content standards in these areas to get the kids not just prepared for the test, but, you know, prepared for the next level of learning, be that middle school, high school, college, make sure we're covering the things we need to cover. That was part of it. At the end, I kind of took their work, put it together for every grade level and every class here at the high school, there's electives and things like that. So in those courses of study that you have, that were the result of this process, there's, you know, kind of one of those for every grade level in every, every subject sense, so it's a lot, it's a lot. Some of the benefits of this, teacher self-analysis of standards coverage, the pacing and things like that. The very first level of this process, well, let me put it down on paper and look at it over a whole year, for the first time, there were some insights immediately. I talked to teachers at, at every building that kind of immediately realized some things, or recognized some things about what they were teaching and how long it was taking, that, like, was informative to them, and just seeing it all laid out was, was insightful. The second thing, the building level analysis of maps gave us insights. There were social studies teachers and English teachers here at the high school talking about how and when they teach certain kinds of writing, and if they had not looked at each other's curriculum maps across grade level or across subjects, they would have never seen that kind of thing. So that was an important step of the process, too. Grade, horizontal alignment, we talked about, vertical alignment, gaps and overlap, we talked about, and this is going to provide kind of a jumping off place for us for further curriculum instruction work. One example that I can think of, in the ELA vertical alignment meeting, there was quite a lot of discussion about writing and writing curriculum, and pretty much, teachers at pretty much every level said, you know, we're doing the best we can with this, or, you know, we feel like we're piecing things together to do the best we can, but we all understand that, like, if we had a cohesive system for teaching writing, then we'd be better off. When you can get a group of teachers to say, hey, we want this, like, we know we can do this better, that's when you know that you've done the system, you know, you've done this process the right way, because they care about, you know, the kids' learning, they care about covering the standards, so. And then, of course, curriculum, everything curriculum is very expensive, and when we find out, like, we're, we're kind of, Matt, we're aligned, we're not aligned, what we need, then that gives us, we're gonna make smarter curriculum purchase decisions, because we're gonna, we're gonna know what we need, we're gonna know where we need it. With that, are there any questions that you want to add?
Wes, you said before that when you got into this process, that you saw a lot of the horizontal alignment was already in place, pretty much.
I agree, yes.
What about vertical? What'd you find there?
The truth is, the latest versions of the Ohio content standards and the tests that went along with it forced a lot of vertical alignment that I wouldn't assume when I first got into teaching, 1990, whatever, 1991. So the, the standards and the tests have forced a vertical alignment.
Okay.
That's really, pretty good. But there were some conversations about where we leave off in this class and where we start in this class, and some, some great discussions about some, like, writing was a big one, strengths and weaknesses of students in math, that were, you know, like, some vertical alignment issues, like, okay, we know we did that in history, but we gotta do a better job of it, because in eighth grade, they're terrible in it, right? And the opposite.
And one of the reasons you get, you tend to have better horizontal alignment is because you have grade level meetings.
Right.
So the third grade team meets, they're almost on a daily basis, and they're having these conversations, but rarely do you have meetings between third and fourth grade, or fourth and fifth grade. That's where the vertical alignment gaps are created, because those conversations just don't happen frequently. So we're gonna, that's something that has to happen continuously from this point forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you for the detail. Okay, item five is the superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
I recommend a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between OCSE and the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education for an alternative work week for all 260-day employees during the summer of '23, from June 5th to '23 through August 13, '24. And it would be a four, 10-hour work, or work week versus a five, eight-hour work week.
I'll move.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number two, I recommend a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between OCSE and the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education to amend the language of negotiated agreement for Article 23.17, field trips, extra regular runs, see attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second. Questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number three, I recommend a resolution to approve the MOU between OCSE Union and the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education to amend the language of negotiated agreement for Article 17, the bid proceeds, or see attachment C.
I'll move. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number four, I recommend a resolution to approve the MOU between OCSE and the Vermillion School Board to amend the language of the negotiated agreement for Article 38, the food service general, attachment D.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Number five, I recommend the board approve the one-year teacher additional duties contracts for the '23-'24 school year as listed.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Abstain.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Abstain.
Mr. Massey.
Abstain.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-0, one abstention, or two abstentions.
Number six, I recommend the board approve the athletic trainer services agreement between Mercy Health, Youngstown LLC, and Vermillion Local Schools, beginning July 31, '23, for one-year term. Thereafter, the agreement shall automatically renew unless otherwise terminated, see attachment B, or, sorry, attachment E, sorry.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And number seven, I recommend the board approve the nurses agreement with Mercy for two LPNs for 182 days for the '23-'24 school year at a cost of $97,952.40, see attachment F.
I move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item six is the treasurer's report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for June 2023, and that is attachment G.
I'll move. I'll second.
Just trying to get to it here. All right. First, we'll start off with general funds, and we'll start with the revenue. Through the month of June, the district received $25.125 million compared to $24.00 at this time last year, and $24.3 million in fiscal year '21. As such, the district collected slightly more than its historical average revenue. Our May forecast anticipated general fund revenues at $25,326. Our actual revenue compared to our forecast, it's an increase of $93,205 or 0.37%. Moving on to the food service revenue, through the month of June or through the end of the fiscal year, the district received $882,000 in food service compared to $1 million at this time last year and $627,000 in fiscal year '21. Despite food service not being 100% subsidized by the government like last year, our revenue has been higher than anticipated, and that is primarily due to increased participation. Our food service program and the employees that work there did an amazing job with keeping up with what was previously 100% subsidized. So they did a great job this year. Taking a look at all fund by revenue, through the end of the fiscal year, the district received $28.3 million in all funds compared to $31.3 million at this time last year and $28.7 in fiscal year '21. On average, all fund revenue since 2017 has been $27.8 million, to give you some frame of reference there. Moving on to the expenditures for the general fund, through the end of the fiscal year, the district expended $26.6 million from the general fund compared to $23 million at this time last year and $22.4 million in fiscal year '21. Our May forecast anticipated general fund expenditures at $26.379 million. Our spending this year is actually an increase of $309,000 or 1.2% more than forecasted. The main reason for that forecast is I didn't anticipate paying off as many contracts as we did for the retirees that we had for the June 30th payment. Moving on to food service, through the month of June, the district expended $838,000 compared to $868,000 at this time last year and $618,000 in fiscal year '21. Looking at all funds by expenditure, through the end of the fiscal year, the district expended $30.9 million compared to $28.5 million in fiscal year '22 and $26.5 in fiscal year '21. Moving on to the cash, through the end of the fiscal year, the district had a total of $17.35 million in cash compared to $18.9 million in fiscal year '22 and $17.9 in fiscal year '21. Moving on to food service, through the end of the fiscal year, the district had a total of $416,000 in food service compared to $391,000 at this time last year and $183,000 in fiscal year '21. Then, moving on to all cash, through the end of the fiscal year, the district had a total of $21.7 million in cash compared to $24.3 at this time last year and $21.6 in fiscal year '21. The average amount of cash remaining at the end of the fiscal year since 2017 has been 20 million, 20.1 million, basically. Again, just for some frame of reference there. So our ending cash balance is where it has been historically on average since 2017. Taking a look at the negative accounts and the general fund transfers, the general fund transferred $29,9795 to the athletic fund. It transferred $3,452.18 to the prom fund, and the only account that we have negative at year-end close was our Title I fund of negative $3,614.95. The reason for that, I had submitted a project cash request to ODE. They just hadn't sent us the money yet by year-end. So that money's accounted for. We can close our books with a negative account because we have that project cash request in to ODE. And lastly, we'll take a look at our investments. Through the end of the fiscal year, the district earned a total of $348,528.15 on interest compared to $160,085.67 at this time last year. It's a difference of $188,442.48 or 118% more.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the student activity program purpose, goals, and budget for the 2023-2024 school year, and that's attachment H.
I'll move. I'll second.
Stepp. The purpose and goals are just something that we get audited on. Every club activity, whether it's athletics, a student-managed activity, a principal's fund, anything that generates cash, it will need to be spelled out how it's for the betterment of the district. They fill those forms out, we keep them on file, the board approves the purpose of those goals, and then, maybe three years from now, we'll have an auditor asking for them.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. Number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the renewal of the property and casualty insurance proposal from Fitzgibbons and Arnold Company for Wright Specialty American Family effective July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024 at a cost of $110,524.
I'll move. I'll second.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. And number four, recommend a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023 final appropriations, transfers, and advances, and that is attachment J.
I'll move. I'll second.
Who is the first?
Shelley did.
All right.
Anything of note in there?
Well, yeah, on the first page here, you should have what we had approved in the June meeting for our appropriations, and then the last column there is our final appropriations. If you look on the dollar change column, you can see where I've reduced everything. A few of them I had to increase slightly. In total, though, we reduced our final appropriations from our June appropriations by $1.391 million. Our total appropriation for the end of the fiscal year was $31.5 million. I made some adjustments to our unencumbered fund balance, which is our certificate, and then the third page here is just showing you how much we have available, which is $52 million, minus our appropriations of $31 million. It gives us a balance of $20.48 million. These all certificates get sent to the county auditor for their approval, and they keep everything.
Just out of curiosity, what's the difference on the first page? What's the difference between the two safety and security accounts, line items, 30 and 70?
The 30 is safety and security, and the 070 is our capital projects fund.
Okay, so it's not safety and security?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. Thank you.
Item seven is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item one, minutes of the June 12, 2023 special meeting and regular meeting. Item two, approve the preschool agreement with Murray Ridge Center, Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Vermillion Local Schools for the '23-'24 academic school year for education services to eligible students. Item three, approve the '23-'24 student handbooks for the Vermillion High School, Saylorway Middle School, and Vermillion Elementary School and preschool. Item four, approve the courses of study for Vermillion Local Schools K through 12. Item five, approve the 2023-24 school fees, Vermillion Elementary School, $37, see attachments for SMS and VHS. Item six, approve the transportation contract for services with Ohio Developmental Supports and Vermillion Local Schools from July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2024 at a rate of $237 per trip to PEP Prentice and $47 per trip for a van aide. Number seven, approve the independent contractor agreement between Bright Ideas Speech Therapy LLC and the Vermillion Local School District for speech-language pathology services for a Vermillion student at a rate of $31.25 per 15-minute unit. Item eight, approve the independent contractor agreement between Bright Ideas Speech Therapy LLC and Vermillion Local School District for preschool evaluations as needed at a rate of $31.25 per 15-minute unit. Item nine, approve the employment actions, resignations, as listed on the agenda. Item 10, approve the one-year teacher additional duty contracts for the '23-'24 school year as listed on the agenda. Item 11, approve the one-year limited duty contracts for the '23-'24 school year as listed on the agenda. Item 12, approve up to 18 additional hours for professional development for the '23-'24 school year to Terry DiGidio, educational aide, at 17:34 per hour. Item 13, special rate project of $34 an hour for professional development for the 2023-24 school year to Brooke Spafford, up to three hours, Paul Wersh, up to 20 hours. Item 14, one-year certified limited contract for the 2023-24 pending alternative licensure of intervention specialist to Paul Wersh, Level 1, Step 0. Item 15, a per diem rate of $63.99 per hour for 1.5 hours to Stacy Smith for extended services for 2023 and '24. Are there any items that are to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Move to accept?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item nine, dates and locations of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held at the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, Ohio, unless otherwise noted. Regular meeting of Monday, August 14, 6:00 p.m., regular meeting Monday, September 11, 6:00 p.m., regular meeting Monday, October 9, at 6:00 p.m. Item 10, public participation. The public participation section of the Board of Education agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, ideas, or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding the issue, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual, respectful of the rights of others, and second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should have first addressed the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, and administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting the district's school business. So we'll start at the top of our sign-in list, Ray Asik. Yeah, if you would, please.
Thank you. Name's Ray Asik, 4112 Ford Lane. I read and also talked with people saying that the Vermillion School Board is forbidding one hour of release time for religious instruction. Is that true or not?
At this point, the board does not support time during the school day for religious instruction. We, and you know, a good, the presentation we saw on growth today is a really good reason why we think we need the kids in school. We've heard a lot from the LifeWise group, and we're not against LifeWise. We believe it should be a program that's done outside school hours, and we would support that.
Okay, I just want to quote something from the Bill of Rights, Amendment 1. Congress, or if you put it parentheses, "The school board shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress or grievances." So a lot of words there, but my interpretation of that, I don't see why the students couldn't have an hour during the school day once a week to, if they so choose. Any questions? That's about all I really have, so.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Joseph Jones.
Joseph Jones, 218 Sixth Road. I have a question to the presiding officer or the superintendent, doesn't matter to me. I, one of the biggest issues that I've had as a parent since I've been here is the bathroom policy that you guys have, and there's been some contention on whether I can get you guys to agree on what's actually going on in the building. From what I understand is, from class to class, there are no real transitions. It's just moving from one place to the other, and children, students in this building, I don't know of all buildings, have to ask to use the restroom. Are we going to review that policy? That seems more like a COVIDian policy that we had in there for COVID-19. May not be as big of a deal now. Also, it's one of the biggest complaints that my student has is that she has waited multiple times over the year to use the restroom and that the system's not perfect. I'd like to see, I've heard a lot about equity being discussed. You know, what is more equitable than using the bathroom, every student being able to go when they need to go? That outcome is the same for every last person, but that's not the truth inside this building right now. There's not an equitable bathroom situation. I'd like to see that resolved. So if I could get some clarification on what your transitions are going to look like this year and whether they will include students being able to use the bathroom at will in the transitions, would be very much appreciated. And I can sit down after this, if your comments, if you have any.
Thanks. Hi, you want to talk about?
Yeah, this is Mrs. Bengal's policy here at the high school, and I know it was done mostly because of the vaping situation, that we have an epidemic of vaping.
Can I ask you a question about that real quick as well?
Sure.
It is, to my knowledge, that the vaping machines are, they come stocked with microphones inside of them, and they are disabled by the technician here. That's not good enough for me. I don't want microphones in those machines while my kids are inside the bathroom, and that is fact. So you need to go check if those machines have specs for microphones, and then we've already researched that and brought that up to this board before, but those microphones need to be removed. I don't trust you guys to say, "Oh, well, my guy's going to listen," or make sure that that's not the way it is. They shouldn't be there in the first place. Cameras, surveillance devices have no place in the bathroom.
I honestly don't know what you're talking about in that regard.
Okay, well, I can, if you want to make it an agenda item, I can bring it back up at the next meeting and show you the specs on the machine and show that it has a microphone in it. Or we can talk to this gentleman right here and get that garbage out of our bathroom.
Well, going back to the purpose of the vape machines or vape detectors, they're to detect the vaping, and there's no, as far as I understand, I'm not aware of anybody listening to any sounds or any...
They haven't sounded 100% there are microphones in that.
Okay. I'm not arguing a point with you. I'm just completely not aware of that. These things were installed before I got here, so I'm really not familiar with them. We chose not to use them in my previous district because you just can't keep up with all the alerts that come from them. There's so much vaping going on. And so I know that that was one of the primary reasons for going to this system where you don't go to the bathroom in between classes. You go to your next class. If you need to go to the restroom, you ask the teacher, and they send you to the restroom, so that we have, we keep track of who's in the restrooms and who's not, to try to resolve some of the issues that occur. And it's not just vaping. There's other, from time to memorial, there's been problems in bathrooms, either in between classes or when kids meet in there for whatever purpose. And so I know it was to a large reason for making that rule that we are not going to go to the restroom in between classes. You're going to go straight to class and ask for permission, was to resolve some of those issues.
Well, another issue that I have with that situation is, from what I understand, there's a bathroom in the administrative places where kids who identify of a certain class can go there without questions asked. That's not an equitable bathroom situation for anybody who's not in that class. So that's my issue, too. Make sure that your bathroom policy is uniform all the way around for all students, and it means the same thing. And I think you guys are really sending a mixed message right now, especially since it's only in one building. It's not in the other ones. I think it's time to let this policy go. policy go. It's a very harsh policy. It upsets parents. It makes us not trust you, and the way that you can regain our trust again. If you can't do something wrong, and he gets in trouble for it, or she gets in trouble for it, then they need to be disciplined, and that's a parental problem. It needs to be handled. But punishing every child because of that student, because you don't know who they are, is not, is not, it's not fair. It's not an equitable situation, and it's literally doing it to the body function. Go into the bathroom, you know? I think that you guys will carry a lot of goodwill with this community by telling Mrs. Bengal to reevaluate that policy this year and maybe see if we can go a different rate. Maybe part of the reason why these scores and kids are starting on is because they're being told so often, you have to do it this way, do it the way that we want to do it, or you can only go at this time. And a lot of these kids are divergent, nor divergent thinkers. When they need to go to the bathroom, they need to go. Not everybody fits inside of a box, and except when it's time to go to the bathroom. And that's all I'm asking, is that all of our kids inside this building can go without any issues. It's already hard enough being in here, being a kid, and going through kids' stuff. To ask to use the restroom is an embarrassment for a lot of kids. No matter how you slice it, it's embarrassing. And if you're going to put a kid in that situation, I just, I think it's time for it to go. I know that you guys can give me some time. I really appreciate it, but I'm urging you greatly to deal with the microphone situation inside of the bathrooms and to reassess the bathroom situation because I think that it's not something that every country should really be behind. This is something that they do in camps, and they do in other places, but they don't do inside a school. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Catherine Boltman?
I just came to kind of see what was happening.
Okay.
And I have no votes in rights, but I am very interested.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. How about Pamela Brunetti?
Right here. I just, we're not from this district. I used to work in this district, but I just wanted to see what was going on, and we come from the other part of Erie County, and most of those schools are doing Lifewise. So we were aware of that and just wanted to encourage, the thought, I do understand the score situation, but there's also needs with things that are going on in our world, that kids need some spiritual development. With all the mental health issues and all the anxiety that's going on with everyone, including these kids, it just needs to be addressed. So.
Thank you. We don't disagree with that. We just, we're just curious why it can't be a program outside school hours, so.
Can I answer that?
Well, you've tried. I mean, go ahead.
Well, I had a conversation with somebody this week, and it's mentioned that to them. By the way, it's not fair to say that you have offered that, to be honest, because it's never been right.
Oh, my goodness.
It's come up at every meeting, Cliff.
Every single meeting.
Absolutely.
Actually, I think it has been.
Way back. We have emails.
Financially cannot afford to drive kids to a place. That's why they're only able to send their kids to school because of the bus and picks them up. I think that if it's not done during the school day, all those kids that don't socially economically have the ability, that's going to leave them out. I think what you're saying, the kids have dropped off versus the ride to bus, but you know, it's not good. It's discriminated against a number of kids. That's why it's important to go during the day.
I got you. You'll never know till you try, though, right?
What's that?
I said you would never know till you try.
Right.
So. Gary Brunetti?
I just wanted to observe what was going on.
Thanks for coming. Jean Anderson.
Jean Anderson, 3240, Edwater Drive, Vermillion. I just have a couple of common sense things to ask. First of all, you might have less of a vaping problem if some of the students could have a break for religious education. We've noticed that a lot of the statistics in schools that have release time for religious education has changed for the good. And my next question, which is common sense, and you can just laugh all you want, but how many kids do you think would come to school every day if they didn't get picked up by the bus and if it wasn't a state law that they attend? So what you're asking, parents that want their children released for religious education to do, is to pick them up and drop them off either before or after school, which we already know is difficult because many of your students wouldn't be at school if it depended, excuse me, on their parents picking them up and dropping them off. It just makes no sense to me that you would stand in the way of a right that's already been given to parents per our United States Constitution and forbid them from participating in religious education during the school hours, because it really is a parent's choice to do that. We don't need a Lifewise program to be able to do that, because it's already a right given to the parents to do that, and to claim that you're going to hold them accountable to truancy standards if they miss too many hours and consider them truant and possibly expel them. You know, I can't imagine that you would try to expel students from exercising their rights given them by the United States Green Forum. I just don't get it. I don't get why you would be so difficult for all of the parents that would like to see their kids excused for one hour once a week for religious education. I'm just not getting it. Even though, I know academics are very important, but we believe that some of the principles and foundations that you learn through your religious education is equally important. You can't really have a bound society with just one and not the other. So you don't have to vote on it because it's already a right given, but to think that you're going to try to hold students truant for exercising a right that is given to them, I do not understand. And I would really like you to clarify why you feel so compelled to punish kids and their parents that don't have the means to pick them up and drop them off early or after school with you, if you, if they don't have the right, or you don't have the right to forbid them from participating in that program. I really am not understanding it, and thank you a lot. You do a great job in a lot of ways.
Appreciate it. That's everyone that was on the list. Before we adjourn, I made a mistake at the beginning of our meeting. I didn't see it on here, but we did not do the Pledge of Allegiance, so.
Let's go.
Yeah, let's do it.
Because we were, we were out of sync because we had the conversation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. The time is 6:59 p.m.